What's going on, what's going on guys? Dan Wise over here at Wise Media. We're going to be tuning in live here in a few minutes. We're with Steve Yakima, all kinds of hats changing heads over there. One of the big things that I'm being told we expect to remove here to Yakima only a few months is our mayor is getting booed. So that should be interesting as well to do with the way she's been running things and all her abuse of 911. I think it's above the law, trying to shut down people that are just collecting names, you know, out there doing their, doing what everybody's allowed to do. Um, I'm not sure who's handling that with us, but we had to restart everything. So we should be up in a second. We're on Facebook and YouTube. That's where we're streaming to right now. And we're going to be hearing live over here at the YAKMA live show over there at the city council meeting. So we should be seeing her being removed. See you later. See you later, Mayor. Who's in here watching right now? Anybody with us? Wise Media. They'll be streaming it live here in a few minutes. Those of you that aren't aware of when he abused the 911 call, let's play that. Let's play that. Then we'll, we'll turn over to this. Let me pause this. And then we're going to go ahead and play the 911 call when she tried to flex, when she tried to flex and use the authorities for her own gang. Here we go. Here it is.
911.
Hi, this is Mayor D C O. I, I know that this isn't an emergency call, but I need to talk to somebody. I've emailed the chief, but um, there's some far right wing petitioners at Walmart and they don't, they're not leaving after Walmart has asked them repeatedly to do so. And the police have not taken them off the premises.
Um, we did have a call of that earlier. Who is this?
This is Mayor D C O.
Okay. Um, let me, let you talk to my supervisor, but I do know that the officers have let them know that they would have to have a court order to have them removed.
On private property?
Yeah, I don't know the legalities of that, but let me get you to my supervisor.
Okay. This is Dr. Sickle. Hi, this is Mayor D C O. And um, I have had some constituents call me to tell me about some right wing petitioners over at Walmart. And that Walmart does not want them on their property. And the police have come out and told them that they can't do anything about it. And I'm wondering, how, how can that be? If petitioners were on my yard, the police could take them out if they were on my private property.
Um, I can just read you what this email I have from Legal says, or if you want to talk to a sergeant, you can, I can have them call you as well. But basically, um, the, it says, under Washington law of right to access on private property for political purpose, it extends to the circulation of petitions. Um, it says that for this reason, the city of Yakima will not remove petition, petition signature gatherers absent a court order issued by Yakima Superior Court prohibiting the group from collecting signatures.
Um, even if they were on my yard?
Yeah, it has to do with the right to access, right of access on private property for political purposes.
That's insane. Um, so, so Walmart has no rights?
They have to go to get an order from Superior Court prohibiting a group from collecting signatures is what this says.
Okay. And how long does that take?
I would have no idea about that. Um, I can have the sergeant give you a call if you'd like, if he might have more information. I'm just reading what they've sent to me as far as that goes.
Okay. Um, yeah, you can give me a call. Okay. What's your phone number? Um, I'll give my personal one. It's 509-307-1880. Okay, I'll have him give you a call.
She just gave her actual cell phone. Man, uh, so yeah, feel free to watch this later to get her phone number. Um, all right, let's go add over here. And I think they're getting started over here. So let's turn on some audio. Sounds like a commercial. Welcome back in a second. But uh, it sounds like uh, from what, from what, from what I can learn through this process as like moving the area. Sounds like Matt Brown might be the one taking, uh, taking over. So I'm curious, what do you guys think about this? Whoever's watching and don't forget hop over on uh, to our YouTube channel, Wise Media Group on YouTube and do me a favor. Like, subscribe and share all that fun stuff. Uh, we have other cool things. This Thursday, we have local Spotlight Thursday. We have local businesses coming in that are going to showcase their businesses, kind of state dating. We'll probably have five, six businesses come in. Each one of them gets like five or 10 minutes to talk about who they are, what they do, how we find them. Uh, spreading the local community, get the word out there, shop local, all that fun stuff. This is my community now. Um, William, I see William's watching. Welcome, William. William's over on Facebook watching. Uh, Matt from Mayor. Who's that? That's Brad. Brad says Matt from Mayor. On YouTube, we don't see the people's names that are posting what we do on Facebook. So thank you guys for joining. You know, it just, it just sucks that we even have to worry about shit like this. When you have somebody that's in a position of power that can't, can't do the right thing from the right reason. Regardless of what your perspective is on politics, you had to know that even when she said, I don't know if I should be calling 911, but I need some digital movement. Uh, it's kind of shitty. Um, William, conflict of interest to have. So William says conflict of interest to have district representative be mayor and have ability to represent. Yeah, not wrong there. Um, thank you for, for chiming in there. I'm curious, who's not happy about this? All right, this is a commercial. I think, I think they go live at 5:30. Who, uh, who's not happy about this? I'm curious to know why. It sounds like the fucking left is not. Conservatives, libertarians are going to be, you know, jumped up and down. Uh, and it's pretty up to all the shit. But I'm curious to see whoever's, whoever's upset with this, what are you upset about? Are you upset about justice being served? Or are you upset that things aren't, all the crazy shit that's been going on throughout the year is finally coming to a head? There's going to be a lot of other things going on today over there, uh, other than if, uh, than our mayor getting booed. Um, I, I think it's going to be an interesting, it's going to be very interesting here. I'm still happy that I don't rely on public funding or support from, you know, money from different businesses with political sides. I'm just over here broke, joke, one of my own podcasts, my own money. So uh, I can say whatever I want to say. Um, we've got some really cool interviews coming up. We're probably going to have some, uh, as all of the, the political heat starts up here in the next couple of weeks and a month, we can have some interesting characters coming in here and talking to us. Yeah, anybody, anybody got a problem with what's going on? I would love to hear about it. Share your comments, share your thoughts, good, bad or ugly. And check out the audio. I feel like City of Yakima should hire me to do their livestream. It looks like it's done on like a, a very, very old school system. Can't help it up, even if we don't like these shows. See if we look this. William, William wrote a book. We're going to read it. It's important for a city council. Look, the fact that you took that long to type it out, we have to show it to everybody. It's important for city council members to represent the interests and voices of their districts having forum meetings where they gather input and vote based on the authority opinion of their constituents. Can be a way to ensure democratic decision-making. Uh, which allows the greater accountability and transparency in the decision-making process. Crucial for elected officials to listen to and reflect the wishes of the communities they serve, like doing those things and uh, um, that's all I can see. William. And if you guys want to see what I'm seeing over here, do see. That's uh, that's the livestream in real time right there. And there is a link in the description. For whatever reason, if the stream gets shitty, the audio gets shitty, who knows? Who knows? Conspiracy is going deep around here in Yakima evidently. Um, there's a link in the description of the video for the actual livestream. Also, you guys should definitely go check out, uh, if you haven't already seen, um, the actual 911, if you're just listening to. I found that video from We the Governor, um, content provided by We the Governor. There's a link to the video. I can link it for you. Just support this fair. Can't take credit for that. Credit, credit to do. There you go. There's a, there's a link that just posted it in the live, also in the description of the video as well. Did you ever think when you're a kid, and one day I'm going to be live streaming the city council meeting? This is the channel I used to just ignore and skip. Uh, who watches this stuff? As you get older and older and older, if you don't watch this stuff, you end up, uh, you end up shit out of luck when they didn't ask you and you wonder why. So you had to do your part, guys. You had to get out there. You got to be involved. And it's a lot, it's a lot to take in if you're new to it for sure, like myself. I'm new to the whole political realm. Politics have just become important to me over the last few years. Even also here in Yakima, being a transplant from South Florida, I have to relearn everything all over again. So, you know, coming here and I realized the importance, the importance of aging, not just to vote, but all of your local government, everything going on, local politics, all of these things, what goes on in your school, what your kids, like a lot of what's going on right now. I think a lot of why there's been major shift change. You've got politicians in there that are basically want to be able to do things with your children in school without telling the adults first. We're talking with young kids. Uh, that's a little absurd. I had kids in school still. Thank God. I, I kept them grown. 23 and 21. If they were in elementary school, middle school, God forbid, they came home and told me, hey dad, I was in the bathroom today and you know, a, a boy was in there peeing because he identifies as a girl. And I'm not notified that the school has these types of policies. I would be extremely upset with the school and whoever allowed this to happen. So I think we've gotten a little bit too crazy on the, uh, on the left side of the spectrum, unfortunately. And you know, unfortunately, all of these arguments come down to the left person's side, but it doesn't happen. Because you should be based your way. If you're a sports team and you're a Buffalo Bills fan like me, you're a Buffalo Bills fan rain or shine, but your politics should be the same. You should be based your politics based on the way you were raised or based on your values. You should be based on what's really better for the whole community. And sometimes admitting mistakes, admitting that it wasn't the best choice for you, by not changing your ideas, your values, your thought process, challenging thought, using yourself in the process. We were still on commercials over there. I've got the audio from the real world. Good about. Hopefully you guys could hear that. I'm assuming you can. Can we get audio checks from the audience? We've got quite a few people watching on Facebook. We've got a, I guess, we've got a few people watching on YouTube. And we're probably, we're like maybe three to four minutes out before, before the kickoff. What have you guys got for the Super Bowl? You're a Buffalo Bills fan. That's tough. Maybe they could have picked a better picture from that. I'm not going to lie. No offense, Matt Brown. I've got horrible pictures out there too, but come on by the studio, Matt. We get a, we'll get a better headshot of it. Going on Kelly? We got Kelly. We got Chris watching, Justin Brown, William. Welcome, welcome everybody. Welcome to Wise Media Group. We're over here in the Larson Building downtown Yakima on the 9th floor. And if uh, you have a business, if you're an entrepreneur, if you have a really shocking story or just a cool story, it could be about you, about somebody else. You want to share it with, uh, with Yakima and the world. We're all about spreading positivity over here and keeping the community engaged with what's going on. Um, I don't really know the complete direction of where my Wise Media Group is going. I just know that we really want to stay engaged in the local community. But try to do as much as I can that's not in, that's not outside of the community. Uh, we just did a big piece on some scam artists that were running around Yakima holding signs for raising donations for some girl with brain cancer. That's not real, doesn't exist. We come to find out that they might be pretty connected to some like, uh, serious criminal underground enterprises. So who knows, there might be. Right now, I go missing. It was the guy in the corner holding a sign, raising money for the girl for brain cancer. Might need a bodyguard. I don't know. You know. And uh, this will be available for a restream once, once it's over. If you watch the playback. So if you did miss the 911, um, as soon as we can see it at least.
This is Mayor D C O. I, I know that this isn't an emergency call, but I need to talk to somebody. I've emailed the chief, but.
911, the mayor, call 911.
Far right wing petitioners at Walmart.
To complain about somebody, I believe it was at Walmart. At Walmart, getting voters and getting signatures, uh, not voters, getting signatures, doing nothing illegal. And she wasn't happy about it. She used her powers. Yakima's already kind of an odd state. I don't know if you guys know this or not. In a lot of other states and probably bigger cities like West Florida, you can call 911 24/7, seven days a week. Here, 911 is like closed on the weekends. It's closed after hours. Uh, not 911, I'm sorry. Your local police department is closed after hours, closed on the weekends, closed on holidays. So for somebody who abused and called 911 because they couldn't call the regular police officers, clearly tells you it wasn't an emergency call. The fact that she didn't get the hour just pressed against her, like, if I would have done that, if I would have abused 911 and said, hey, there's somebody out here that I'm not happy about. I'm pretty sure they would have hauled Dan off the handcuffs. So, you know, I think she's getting off kind of, kind of easily. I think we might be getting ready. It's 5:30. I've never streamed like this before. So this is uh, here it comes. Awesome. Some chilling music right there. At the stage. Y'all got your popcorn? They need a new composer too. Need, get me to come in and do whatever this Atari graphic videos they got going on and it's special coming in. Come on, wipe that. Everybody hear this? Okay. You hear the stream coming through? Looks like they're late to the party. She's kind of groovy, not going to lie. Oh man. No wonder why they have no viewers. I feel like they should have like a dancing chihuahua. Free, freewheel here. Dancing chihuahuas and kittens, something entertaining. I know it's a serious venue and you want people to stay tuned. We're dealing with society that has like mind of goldfish these days. You can't keep the attention. The music is not coming for you guys. It is not me. Like you can't turn it down. Happy New Year to everybody. I was in Bed, My, 5:30 or 5:00. Still on uh, East Coast time seems, I don't know. I've, I've been here for months now. I still, hey Colleen. We got Colleen watching, Kelly watching, Chris watching. Thank you guys for tuning in. Hopefully this thing's supposed, supposed to be starting already. It said 5:30. Maybe they can't get the microphones going. Maybe they're having technical difficulties. But you know who's not having technical difficulties is this guy right here, Dan Wise, Wise Media. Where's everybody watching from? What part of, uh, is everybody here in Yakima? Took me a while to get this thing. Is it Yakima or Yakima? Pronounce, somebody pronunciated it with like your uh, spell it way should be said. Someone was just going to try to. If you haven't done so, go subscribe to my YouTube channel, guys. Wise Media Group. We try to do everything locally here in Yakima. We've got three people on YouTube now watching. So I spoke to somebody else that's, uh, that's definitely keeping an eye on this. He thinks it's going to go real fast. Because now that it's, um, pretty much controlled by the powers that be, it's, the power shifted. Um, you should drive through this. There's really not much opposition. So that should be true. I remember I was, I lived here when this 911 call happened. It just, I didn't check on local police. One day I tried to tell them it was closed on the weekend. That's happened to you. So then you have to decipher what's the emergency call, what's the driving motive. Pretty sure that, uh, current mayor knew that it was not an emergency call by the way she started off the phone call. And uh, in this video, at the beginning of the video, we'll play it again if you want. For those that want, those that stick around. If you didn't hear the 911 call from the mayor, which called to complain about people gathering signatures, we'll play it again if you're ready. If they have to start. Wow, it's not started. I'm sure that they didn't change. Connect to that full time. It's a fucking screen. But I'm not, I'm not. This is where it's going to be playing. While we're waiting, I'll ask you guys a question. Whoever is the first person to message me the answer, either on Facebook or on YouTube. Um, actually, the first person to do it on Facebook and the first person to do it on YouTube, I'll send $10 to your Cash App and Rose. Oh, here we go. We'll do it after. Stay tuned and we'll do a little game. Everybody think about that? Sounds legit to me. I can't, can't disagree with that.
It.